Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune as a Star Ledger on January 3rd, 2019. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. So first, we're gonna approve a couple items. The meeting minutes are August 14th and 26th, and Board Secretary's report. Both items, four and five. Can I have a motion? Okay. Mr. Arico, Mrs. Maroni.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Arico?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
All yes.
Okay, so next up, we're gonna open up for public comments on resolutions. But before we get into the resolutions, I'd like to propose to table one item, one appointment, which is on page, where is it? On page nine, oh, page 10, I'm sorry.
Oh, good.
Irene Solms, the library aide, in a personnel report on page 10, I'd like to table that appointment for this meeting.
We're on personnel?
Yes, personnel.
Yes.
Yeah, do I have a second?
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Brescher.
Irene Solms, I saw her on the yes.
On page 10.
Mm-hmm. Good, good. Thank you.
Okay, this is the vote to table, Ms. Solms. Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Arico?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. Shi, can I have a, uh?
Yes.
We need to speak more into the mic because the audience can't hear, especially Dan.
Oh, Dan, we gotta speak to the mic.
Okay.
The room is too big. All of us, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, all of us, all right, all of us, we just get closer to the microphone. All right, you hear, we're tabling one appointment on page 10, okay? Now we're open for public comments on these resolutions only, so anyone, okay, Karen.
E39 Jonathan Drive. I have a question on personnel. In the case of a transfer, if a transfer is involuntary, is that indicated or usually indicated on the agenda? Or not?
No.
Okay, thank you. And if there's a change in salary, is there, a lot of them list one salary or the other? The salary that they're currently at and the salary, the higher salary? Do they list that?
Usually if there's a change in salary, but not if it's related to stipend, no.
Okay.
Listen, you gotta stop telling.
Okay, my other question is just about rice notices, and I understand that in all the years since I left, things have changed and progress has been made, and it used to be that you received a rice notice, and that's how you, it brought your attention to the fact that your employment conditions were being discussed. And over the years, it now is a blanket notification to everyone every month that, so therefore, it's nullifying to me that the effects of a rice notice. But I'm just curious, how do you send the rice notices out to all the employees? Is it a notice? Is it a piece of paper?
Email.
Email?
I believe, I believe it's an email notification.
Okay, if it's an email, is there any way you can tell that all of these employees had access to their email and all received it and no one was left off the list? Because I know there were a lot of notices I missed when I worked in the district. Say all the reading specialists were supposed to get something and mine didn't come through, and I didn't know there was a meeting I needed to be at or something like that. Is there any way you get feedback to know that the people who are being discussed received that rice notice? You know, we assume everybody did, but no one's gonna go, hey, they're gonna discuss people at the meeting, so it might not be brought to their attention, since it's every month.
That's correct. The database that we use is people that are presently employed by the system. That data is pulled from the same database where people get paid every month, so I would imagine if somebody didn't receive a check, they'd let us know, so.
Right, but if they didn't receive an email that went out to everyone and they weren't expecting it, I wonder if they would know that.
I would have to check with Mr. Benedict, he's the person that oversees that manager of data.
Okay, thank you.
If you had someone specifically, Mrs. Budowski, that you're aware of, maybe didn't receive something, by all means, drop me an email, I know you've done that on other occasions.
Okay, yeah, I'm good for that. But it's just the whole rice notice, it's like, all my life I've known that, you know, if you get a, you get a rice notice, that they're gonna move you, this, that, the other, and it, as a reading specialist, it happened all the time, so I was used to that.
It was called the Morel decision, it was a couple of years ago, that's what we were directing.
I knew the legal behind it, but.
Correct, just to expand on it, the Morel decision required that boards notify all individuals that are in the personnel section, which is why the board started providing notices to all, but if there's gonna be a disciplinary action or an adverse action, boards are encouraged to ensure that those individuals are aware of their rice notice in some manner, shape, or form.
Right, it kinda nullifies the rice notice, though, when you think about it. Thank you.
Any other public on the resolutions? Okay, seen none, so let's move on. I always do this separately, Personnel Resolution. Can I have a motion on Personnel Resolution only? Ms. Arico, second. Mrs. Peng. Personals Resolution.
First Personnel.
Yes.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes, on everything except for the coaching appointments.
Which one?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, I didn't hear what you said, Mr. Brescher.
Coaching, everything except coaching.
Everything except coaching appointments.
We're having a hard time hearing down here.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
She said yes, closer.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward? This is Personnel, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Arico?
Yes, on everything except number 16, coaching appointments.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
So carried.
All right, so next up, the other remaining items, Administration, Curriculum and Instruction, People and Special Services, and Finance, all the rest of the resolutions. Can I have a motion on that? Mr. Brescher? Dr. Chen?
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
I know, I heard. Yes. I was trying to think if there was anything I needed to step up.
Yeah, 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 I know what you're thinking, yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Brescher?
Yes.
Mrs. Peng?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mrs. Ward?
Yes, except for.
Wait, 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 wait. Yeah.
To she.
To she, okay.
Excuse me, Dan?
Yes.
I just would like to clarify and point out that with respect to one of the items involving the superintendent goals, we would, I would recommend that Ms. Conway just amend her vote to abstain on that section.
That's what I was just about to bring up, because that's what I was hesitant until I looked. I abstained from that due to conflict I was just told about.
So everything else except 2C for Mrs. Conway.
Correct.
Got it. Okay, Mr. Arico?
Yes, on everything except the professional development documentation where my name is listed as attending the New Jersey School Boards Association Convention.
What's Mr. Arico, what's?
Mr. Shi?
Yes, except my name was mentioned in the Finance section about the convention.
Okay. All right, so carried, everything carries.
Yeah.
So I guess, you know, Dan, we should amend the voting on this, all the board members who attend the convention.
Yeah, we all make.
Yeah, we're all in there.
Abstain on their names.
Yeah.
Correct.
Everything except, you know, anything.
Yeah, Dan, I abstained on that.
All right.
And Mrs. Conway? Uh, you too, right? No, you? You're not going?
Okay.
Okay, and Teresa?
Yes.
Okay, we got it.
All right, so two committee reports. CTC, Mrs. Peng?
Um, yes. So Curriculum and Technology Committee have met on August 23rd at Ed Center. In attendance is Beth, Yuna, Shannon, Gail, and Berninda. Curriculum was, first item we talked about is curriculum revisions. It was rewritten or revised over the summer for the following courses, and it was approved on August 26th, including Elementary ELA, Social Study, Elementary Health Science. You're close. Elementary GNT, Grade 6 Mathematics, Algebra 1, Computer Science Discoveries, Grade 6, 7, 8 Science, Digital Arts and Media Technology, High School Counseling Programs, AP Physics C, Mechanics, AP Principles, Biology, Honors Physics. We also talk about Algebra 2 Pilots. There was discussion regarding the textbook for the Algebra 2. Ms. Polikowski said she would investigate the previous pilot using the textbook of interest. Lastly, we talk about Woodrow Wilson Digital Arts and Media Technology Course. This is a new course offered, going to be offered at Woodrow Wilson. It was born out of students' requests for alternated art options. The course was approved on August 26th, Board Meeting. Meeting was adjourned at about 12:40. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. F and F meeting.
Finance and Facilities Committee had a meeting on 9/17/19 at 4:00 p.m. at the Education Center. In attendance were Richard Brescher, Jerry Shi, Yuna Chen, Mark Contaldi, Dan Michaud, and Ken Taylor. Scott Kavellin and Jessica Foley from Wisent Company reviewed the performance audit results and presented a draft copy of the findings. Two, David Blank from Skorinchi and Hollenbach reviewed the results of the competitive contracting proposal for the solar panels project at James Monroe School. We discussed power output, electrical rates, and proposed savings to the district. Three, the committee discussed the use of the turf fields at the high schools by outside groups. The committee decided to defer the discussions to the Policy Committee. Four, the committee reviewed proposals from SSP Architecture for the pre-referendum services, which include information sharing services by Three Summers Creative. A proposal included the communications campaign, architectural graphics, and printing of display boards for the schools. The committee recommended the approval of the proposal. Ken Taylor gave the committee an update on the modular classroom addition at FDR School. The project is progressing well, and the project is anticipated to be completed by the second week in October. Six, the committee discussed the Edison High School turf baseball field project. Field turf met at the site to discuss the project. The decision was to design a red field with gold base paths.
Vegas gold.
They'll be providing a rendering of the field with the planned color scheme for further review. Seven, it was reported to the committee that the clothing bins that were located at all the school locations had been removed. The bins were unsightly due to materials that were being dumped in and laid around the bins and the lack of timely collection by the owner, and that meeting was adjourned at 6:34 p.m.
Thank you. So the upcoming meetings, next month, we're gonna have a combined meeting, October 6th, at 6 o'clock, at the Education Center. This is due, okay, I'm sorry, October 16th, Wednesday, October 16th, at the Education Center is a combined meeting, so it's gonna start a little early at 6 o'clock. It's due to some other, you know, arrangements for the other meetings, so we're combining the traditional two meeting in October into one, okay? So now, before we open for board member comments, we have a statement that all nine board members would like to read. This is regarding the vaping, so we're gonna start with Mr. Brescher.
The use, the use of vaping has been steadily growing popularity among the middle and high school youths. E-cigarettes and electronic cigarettes, also known as electronic vaping devices, are battery-powered devices that were originally marketed as an option for adult smoking sensation.
According to the 2016 New Jersey Youth Tobacco Survey, vaping had surpassed the prevalence of conventional cigarette usage. Though the Food and Drug Administration recently issued new restrictions regarding the sale of vape products, vaping continues to present as a growing concern among youth.
There is a common misconception that vaping is safe. E-cigarettes are not safe for youth. Most contain nicotine, which is highly addictive and harmful to adolescent brain development. It is important to know that even if the vape juice does not contain nicotine, the chemicals and metals contained in the flavoring can still pose a potential for harm.
Similar to traditional tobacco cessation efforts, prevention efforts in education is key for both parents and students. To that end, Edison parents should know that the district is employing a variety of resources to understand how to get the vaping under control among our students and juveniles in general.
The district is exploring methods to detect the use of vaping devices in schools. There are plans to train staff to recognize the use of vaping devices and guide students in making smart choices to address the growing use of vaping devices, including the implementation of a smoking cessation program for the students caught vaping. Since this is a health concern similar to the smoking concern of the past, we're looking for ways to increase student knowledge about the effects of vaping through our health instruction. Please note that our health curriculum already addresses vaping. Another approach is the inclusion of Edison Police Department as a function of their anti-drug assemblies.
We are also planning to partner with the Municipal Alliance, as we did last year, with the Hidden in Plain Sight Program. We are looking to see if we can find a good program for parents, as there is a need for home enforcement and attention. Our Supervisor of Health and Physical Education is on the Municipal Alliance, as am I, and has informed me that they will be discussing vaping at their next meeting.
There is no clear percentage of students that we can identify that are vaping, and we understand that there's a district concern from parents of the use of these devices and developing a wide-range plan to help address vaping and the use of vaping devices to detect them. Vaping is not unique to Edison or any other school district, and the state is working with districts to address the growing concern.
It is a nationwide problem that everyone across the country is struggling with, so much so that Governor Murphy signed an executive order two weeks ago on September 12th to create a task force to recommend solutions in New Jersey. I am sure in the coming weeks, the Curriculum Committee of the Board will be able to provide greater details as the district's anti-vaping plans take shape. The reason we are, all nine members are reading this paragraph is to show that we are all standing together against vaping. With that said, I'm opening up for board member comments. Yes, Mrs. Maroni?
Good evening. We are now in our second year of wingman training, and I want to congratulate the 24 new wingmen at John Marshall School. Last Monday, Ellen Baxter and I went and trained the 24 new wingmen, and they already had their kickoff with the first graders today, and it was amazing. Mrs. Hoffman, the principal at John Marshall, told us that they had more students this year, they had to turn away quite a few of them, and we want to find a way to include everybody in the program, and the kids are so motivated. And when we did training with them last week, we kind of dangled a carrot over their heads all day, and they were so excited, you know, they kept saying, "Miss Beth, can't you tell us what's the surprise? What's the surprise?" All day. Anyway, they are going to Atlantic City in October, and they will be leading a wingman session with superintendents, principals, and Board of Ed members, and they are so excited. I want to thank Jennifer Rossiter, Kathy Gluchowski, the two teacher champions at John Marshall, they are incredible. Thanks to Principal Amy Hoffman, and also the PTA at John Marshall, because they purchased new shirts for the kids, which I'll stand up and model in a minute. We are going to be training at Woodrow Wilson in another week or two, and I spoke to the new principal there, they had over 100 kids petitioned to become wingmen, so that is truly amazing, and they haven't even started the program yet. So we are very encouraged and hope that the more years that we keep the program going, the better and better that it will get, and we're already reaping the benefits of what we sowed last year. And I also want to mention that Ian Hockley came today for the kickoff, and it was very exciting for the children to meet him as well.
Just to piggyback a little bit off Beth, who brought the program to Edison with Mr. Hockley, South Plainfield, where I am an administrator, we also started the program last year, and actually, Mr. Hockley will be at my school on Thursday with my 24 new mentors or mentees. So it's a great program, we started it last year, we had a big presentation at a board meeting, and the students love it, and they like working with the other students in the school. Other than that, I did meet with some parents about the vaping issue that we all discussed about, and we are looking into every single board member. One of the concerns was, there's no signage in the building for the Stop It app that we have for anything, not just vaping. If someone is dealing drugs, if someone's being a bully, if someone has a weapon, they said the kids don't know anything about it. Well, I walk through J.P. Stevens, there's signs all over the place for the Stop It app. So the Stop It app is out there, the signs are out there. Supposedly, they do mention it in student assemblies. I did ask them to include it in the Student Parent Handbook, which I went through today, and in the Student Parent Handbook, there is progressive discipline. So there is discipline if you're caught doing something, you know, incorrect, which includes vaping. So I just want to make sure, and as you heard tonight, we're exploring certain devices, not only to detect vaping, but to detect noise in case there's a fight in the bathroom or anything such like that, bullying going on in the bathroom, whatever it may be, but those are devices we're taking a look at. Nothing's gonna happen quick, and I'm sure Mr. Shi will tell you that. We have to go out to bid, and we have to make sure we get the right devices, we have to make sure we have the right hookups, the Wi-Fi, there's a lot involved. So as quick as we can, get this into the schools, and mainly, we're gonna concentrate on the two high schools first. We hopefully will get that done. Thank you, Mr. Shi.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members? Okay, Mrs. Conway?
Yes, Mr. Shi, I've been looking on Facebook the last week or so, and many of the schools had back-to-school night, and I'm noticing parents questioning what the signs are in the lobby with the pictures of the renditions of the school additions. I think that's a tremendous way to open up conversation and alert the public as to what will be happening, and I so look forward to the board's presentation and letting the parents know more and more about the referendum that will be coming up, because they are acknowledging that something's going on, and it would be fabulous for them to find out when the board starts presenting it. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, this is a kickoff of the campaign, and in our, Mr. Brescher just updated in the FF meeting that we have plans that's coming up, so stay tuned. We'll present a lot of the facts to the parents about the conditions our school districts in, our facilities, so, you know, hope folks will go out and vote on December 10th, right? Any other board member comments? Okay. Mrs. Patel?
So we discussed all the different ways the district is looking into the vaping issue, but there's also another facet to this, which is the legislators. They're already looking into regulating vaping in a few different ways. One is they're looking into banning the flavors of the vapes, so that, because they know that that's what's attracting a lot of kids to vaping. They're also looking to making possession of vapes for someone under the age of 21 illegal. Right now, it's illegal to sell vapes to someone under the age of 21, but not for someone under the age of 21 to actually possess the vape. So they're looking into that. And finally, they're also looking to ban vapes altogether, so I think it's really important for parents to also reach out to their state legislators to let them know what they want and hear them out, because if we can ban vapes altogether or heavily regulate them, then it'll take away from some of this vaping issues that we're facing in our schools. So I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members? Yes, Mr. Brescher.
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to update the public on a couple things. I know that people have been requesting that the Board of Education and the Town Council, that they meet, we talk, we talk with the mayor. I know I showed members that we did send an email back in April for us to have a meeting, and we were still waiting for that. Members in public have seen that email. I have since then sent that email to Councilman Sam Joshi back in August, of which he told me he was gonna set up a meeting between the two parties, and Sam did send a text between Bob and Ralph, saying, "Let's set up a meeting," but we still don't have that date yet. And just so everybody knows, the way the board operates, and we have this on multiple issues, is that if certain board members can't make a certain meeting, you have the meeting, and then other board members fill in as an alternate. You know, so there's, you can basically set up a meeting and have a meeting within a week, you don't need to wait a month or anything like that. So I think, hopefully, the council will reach out to us on that, and we'll get this meeting set up next week. Now, that brings me to another question. The council did request, or at least Sam Joshi did, a copy of our demographers report and all of the renditions and everything that we're doing here with the construction. I think that was at Wednesday meeting. Did we get that over to the council yet?
I have a copy of the demographers report on my computer, and I'm just waiting for something back from SSP to send over with the actual referendum information. As soon as I get that, I was gonna send it all on one email.
Is there an issue with us getting that to them, let's say, by tomorrow?
As long as I get it from SSP, I can get it over to them tomorrow, absolutely.
Send me an email then, if you have a problem getting it from SSP.
All right. Now, do you want me to send it to Mr. Joshi?
Actually, to all the council people.
All of them?
Yeah. I think it's good to keep them all informed, let them all have the documentation so they can see what it is. Maybe they'll come down, they can ask some questions, and, you know, we can work on it together.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shi, real quick, I just wanna, Mr. Joshi did text me again today, and has been texting me daily, and we're trying to arrange a date. I am trying to work with Mr. De
I am trying to work with Mr. Deal because Mr. Deal and I are the head of both committees, but at this point, I'm going to reach out to Mr. Deal one more time, and then, you know, again, we'll try to get a date together because I know Mr. Brescher wants to meet with the council. I'm sure the council wants to meet with us to discuss a lot of different things and hopefully, you know, hash some things out. Just wanted to give you an update, Mr. Brescher. Mr. Joshi didn't forget you.
Okay, thank you. Teresa?
Okay.
Yeah.
First of all, a hearty welcome to the 110 new employees to our school system this month, and much success to you with your assignments. On September 19th, the Edison Township held its annual ceremony honoring the POWs and MIA's of the three wars, World War II, the Korean, and the Vietnam War. It is a most impressive ceremony, and the Edison High School Chamber Choir, under the direction of Mr. Brown, performed the opening and closing musicals, and they were most appreciated. The Lindenor Elementary School PTO held their ice cream social on the 19th also. The faculty and staff turned out in good fashion, and about 200 ice creams were distributed. A good time was had by all. Okay, now, I have something else.
Yes.
Okay. Nine and a half years ago, as a candidate for the Board of Education, the topic of the year in education general, and the first question of the evening at the PTO Candidates' Night concerned privatizing the school's custodial services. All of the arguments regarding savings in pension, social security, health benefits, and unemployment insurance had been the topic of the press for a while. We could unburden ourselves of a whole division of employees and turn our custodians over to one of the janitorial services waiting in the wings. It did not happen. We dodged the bullet then, as we have a few times in the intervening years. This past year, the idea of contracted outside services reared its head big time in the form of an agreement with the township and its subcontractors, which sought to memorialize an agreement for armed security in our schools with open-ended costs not even a consideration. They would be happy to avail themselves of $1.3 million of our budget. Was what was most appalling and scary to me was that even with the best of intentions, the parties to the agreement did not evidence a clue that boards of education should function independent of political intrusion, that we are a standalone system answerable to the taxpayers of Edison, the State Department of Education, and it is our sworn duty to see to it that we remain so. Otherwise, there would be a major breakdown in our school system, one that has been in place and functioning generation upon generation. In the nine intervening years, we have come close to being taken in by outside interests, and it is usually with the best of intentions. Businesses, municipalities, and organizations are run differently from school districts, and it is important that we are mindful of these differences. Now that I have one foot out the door and the other on a banana peel, I am taking the liberty to repeat myself nine years later. When we refer to the Edison schools, we call them the Edison Township School System. Some school districts even slip in the word "independent" in their titles. I don't know if that has legal ramifications or if it's just a descriptive adjective. Either way, we would do well not to lose sight of the fact that we are independent, answerable directly to the taxpayers and to the State Department of Education. But the more operative word here is "system." By definition, a system is a group of interrelated parts that work together to achieve an objective. All entities operate in some form of a system. Basically, they are either vertical systems from the source to the mouth, such as a restaurateur who grows and processes his own food, provides the facility, furnishings, equipment, promotions, and personnel, right up to when they ring the dinner bell and serve. Quality control all the way. Others are horizontal systems, such as the production line in an auto plant where the chassis stream down the line and the component parts are set up just in time to be appropriately placed. When the product reaches the end of the line, it is infused with petrol and is driven out and into the charge of the next taker. The product is finished. At some time in the process, every one of those component parts had to have someone draw up the specifications, send it out to bid, and receive and inspect it before it went on the line. A system of education is unique in that it has both horizontal and vertical integration. We are integrated throughout horizontally according to grade levels, grade three, grade four, et cetera, and the grade levels are integrated vertically, K-12, K, pre-K rather, through 12. When the overall, within the overall system, we have a similar subsystem called "schools." While there is business and construction supporting the system, all the component parts are human beings. We have 1,700 employees and 16,800 students, none of whom comes with quality control and specifications. Each one comes unique unto himself with his own inherited genes and all the experiences of his life, right up to the moment he walks into the school that day. And tomorrow, it will be different. When these 18,500 people enter their assigned schools each day, they must drop their physical, mental, and emotional baggage as best they can at the door, direct mind and body to the rules and activities expected, and work cooperatively with their fellows within the confines of the system, no matter what their position. The person in charge, the school principal, is responsible for every person in that building, and everyone in that building is answerable to the principal, whose monitoring job is monumental. The system itself is as strong as the teacher your child has in the classroom, and every parent's, employee's, and board member's job is to support that teacher. While there is orderly fluctuation within the building, the structure itself is secure and tight. When one of us goes into a school, we enter by invitation or request. Read Across America is an example. We sit down with the students, and there are 15 to 24 pairs of bright, beautiful eyes that are trusting that their teacher introduced them to someone who will make the next 10 to 15 minutes a unique experience, and we do try. I also note that the teacher never leaves the classroom. Now transfer that trust to the parents of the 16,800 students who send their children to school every day, trusting that the Board of Education is the proper people to provide for the physical, intellectual, and emotional well-being of their child. These young people are impressionable and vulnerable, and that trust is not to be violated through any near occasion of untoward behavior. When a teacher issues a student a pass to go anywhere in the building, that teacher should never have a concern that the student will meet anyone who is a stranger to the system, and rightly so. At the risk of sounding maudlin, it is a legal, moral, and sacred obligation on our part, and at no part do we have license to abdicate. To allow people in our schools who are not employees, over whom we have minimal control, and who are not answerable to us through the channels of our system, is an abdication of our duty. Newspapers, television, and the social media are rife with accounts of people having been used and abused through their lifetimes by people who were in possessions of influence, power, and trust with disastrous results. And in most cases, the truth is not known for decades, if ever. As technology advances, so do the online predators. They may even be gaining on us. To add to their baggage, our students are assaulted on a continual basis by the entertainment and fashion industries, the press, and social media that promote murder, violence, sex, mayhem, and deviant behavior as a way of life with impunity. Thought precedes action. The schools are left to curb their enthusiasm. At the door, we also must drop the pronouns "I," "me," and "my." They are not part of our vernacular. Once we become a member of the system, egos, past perfects, advanced degrees, sterling backgrounds, credentials notwithstanding, the operative pronouns become "we," "our," "you," "your," "us," "they." If an administrator gives an address here at the podium, you never hear the word "I." For all the give and take at this table, we are the board. When three of the 10 candidates vying for the seat here reach their goal, it is important that they know that they are becoming a part of a system of education that has educated our children for generations, and improvements have to be made within the system. While each of us brings something to the table, we take nothing. If we give with one hand and take with the other, it's a wash, and we have not served the schools. There isn't one of us who's God's gift to education, but collectively and cooperatively, we can continue to foster a mindset that will keep us as an independent, functioning system of education. The plan we are implementing for armed security has every officer and employee who is vetted, hired, assigned, supervised, evaluated, and if necessary, dismissed by this board. The Board of Education has complete control, flexibility, and authority, no one else. And these past seven months, we dodged another bullet. Now we can afford to be, nor can we afford to be without the support on the outside. We need our parents, professional association, our police, fire, council, mayor, and municipal government support in all our endeavors. On day-to-day encounters, their expertise and knowledge of the presence, of their presence and support is reassuring and most welcome. Back to the custodian issue. When we see our custodians in action, it is their perfunctory tasks we observe, sweeping floors, emptying dustbins, but we don't call them sweepers or dustbin emptyers. We call them custodians. They have custody of the whole physical plant. They turn the key in the door to open the building in the morning and they turn the key to close the building at the end of the day, the time depending on the activities within. As long as anyone is in that building, a custodian is present, and they check regularly oftentimes also. They take pride in their schools. The custodian is also an extra pair of eyes and ears and feet on patrol and reports any irregularities to the principal. Had we subcontracted to the janitorial service, our school activities would be limited by the contracted hours, their concerns for the building maintenance would amount to one with a renter's mentality, and their boss would be remote. In no time would we have, in no time, we would have the tail wagging the dog, and a vital part of our system would have been broken down. And so it goes with any outside contract. Incrementally, we break down the system to the point where we are at the mercy of contractors, which, given time, the big-city train wreck will drive us into the abyss. Additionally, students, faculty, and board members must do their homework. Two years ago, a board member went to the superintendent with a year's worth of listening in the form of five pages documenting the firsthand questionable behavior of one of our administrators. The board member opined that the person did not belong in Edison Township Schools, he should go before he does something really weird, and that the school deserved better. Our superintendent gave that administrator a glowing evaluation and refused to non-renew him. Four of the board members backed the fifth and overrode the superintendent, who proceeded to violate the confidentiality of his office and provided select phrases out of context to the press. Our superintendent passed this personnel problem to a friendly superintendent elsewhere who hired the gentleman. The situation made headlines and broadcast fodder. A dozen and a half Edison people with their own agenda seized the opportunity and hauling a guillotine lined up at two meetings to rant their indignation. It was not a pretty picture. It wasn't long before the independent ones vaporized. The two superintendents resigned, and the administrator was out of his new job mid-year. Not the least, at least insignificant, the receiving board's public minutes assured the concerned parents that they were glad to offer more intensive counseling and revisit sensitive issues to help the students. If that public, if that was public, the private must have been something else. The board member bore the public and private brunt alone, and the press and broadcast people never followed up on the story. However, our board and one of our elementary schools was saved having to be provided with intensive and more intensive counseling and the visiting and revisiting of sensitive issues. Our students never had the need. The school does have better. We dodged another bullet. All this being said, there are no guarantees. We do our best. When our students ride the crest of the vertical flow grades through grade 12, by whatever manner of acceptance they choose, we call it their exit ceremony a commencement. It is a beginning. As the administration and board members shake the hand of each and every one of them and wish them Godspeed, we have to be confident that the undercurrent of the whole process was their psychological safety. Otherwise, they join the ranks of that deleterious culture of blame out there when they so desperately need to be in the ranks of a culture of character, and we have failed them. We are the fifth-largest district in the state and one of the best-run physically and educationally. Our budget should be spent... Our budget should be spent for education objectives as we see fit. Those jackhorners in the community and state with statutory powers to boot who salivate over sharing a piece of the pie and hope to put in their thumb and pull out a plum and proclaim “what a good boy am I,” confident that we won’t miss $30,000 here or a million there, should think again. Our budget, grand as it is, is nipped for finger pulkin. Safety and discipline are fundamental to learning. Immediate needs are monitored closely. However, as years pass, contracts aggrandize control. Everyone’s guard is down, and school districts are hard-put to straighten things out. We have to see ourselves as long-ball hitters. There’s a Chinese proverb which suggests, “When you’re planning for a year, plant a seed; when you’re planning for ten years, plant a tree; when you’re planning for a hundred years, educate your children.” That’s it, Mr. Shi.
Thank you very much. So, anybody else? All right. This weekend, there was an event here hosted by the JP Stevens PT SO. It was the Novatra fundraising for their project graduations. A great turnout. A lot of people came over here, but the problem is so hot, so hot in the gym. So, you know, Mrs. Penn, Mr. pressure, we all went into the gym. It was just steaming hot. So, you know, that will prove that something needs to be done with our facilities, right? I’m just going to leave that. All right. If no more board member comments, I’m opening up for public comments. Yes. Go ahead. She cannot see me. Did she raise her hand? Did she raise her hand? Yeah, go ahead. Huh?
You need to use a microphone.
Do you need to speak from there?
Then she could sit on there.
Just take the microphone. Just take the microphone down. Yeah. Just take the microphone. Let us, yeah.
My name is Bhavana Raval. I live in forty-six Farm Heaven Avenue, New Edison, New Jersey, zero eight eight two zero. My daughter says she’s studying this school, says sixteen-years-old, visually impaired, legally blind right now. I have a question for the board. The thirteenth Friday, when we received the principal email, I was very scared. Then Monday, we have an IEP meeting in the school, this school. In that IEP meeting, my daughter also with us. I asked her one of the questions. In case something happened in a school, you aware about what to do? She said yes. What? I asked her. What? She no. I wanted to know as a mother, because I’m legally blind and handicapped. So, I asked her. She said, “I have to run in the nurse’s office,” because she’s trained by whoever the person. I said, “No, that’s not right. In case something happened, we pray the God, not going to happen in the future, any times, that kind of the incidents. But in case happened, something nearby the nurse’s room, and if she run there, what going to happen?” So, I request them and her caseworker, she says that I’m going to talk to the nurse’s room, and they’re going to be, find out her plan, and we’re going to teach her what to do, and finally, I believe they did. But I have a consult for all other disabled children who have maybe no knowledge, like my daughter. And something happened, right now, my daughter have aid, because last year, she had four times major retina detachment surgery in her eye. So she need help for somebody. Just after this incidence, they changed her aid. Right now, the aid is brand-new in this building. She don’t know what to do. So my consult is there. Having this sensitive information, we all know why they change immediately. And if I don’t know by the principle, maybe I’m not aware about, my daughter is not trained the right way to where she has to go when seriously it happened like that. So board and superintendent and anybody’s need to know, and regular, like normal children and disabled children, for their parents is the same value for their children. So please train them, and I wanted to know what they did for them and make sure to they not hurt any time if have like this evil persons in their mind. To children who’s a disabled and handicapped, not Jeopardy!, they can do whatever the normal children can do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
Yeah.
Anthony Di Amorin, fifteen, Wordex Circle. Just bear with me, I’m really not feeling too well tonight. First of all, I just wanted to, I didn’t know she was going to speak tonight, but I wanted to thank Mrs. Ward. Many people probably don’t know this, but I’ve actually gotten to know Mrs. Ward pretty well over the last couple of years, and she’s really been a huge asset and a huge ally of mine, somebody who I go to when I’m stressed and I have seeking opinions on things, because she has a way of explaining to me in simple terms. She, her and I have talked many, many times about history, hours about history. She’s an avid history lover, and the speech she gave tonight was basically almost identical what she told me last year before she would support me. She was the only one that came out and supported me last year. She saw something in me, and I always remember that. And she asked me what my thoughts were, and she explained what she explained tonight. And she put it in such simple terms, and you very articulately spoke tonight, and I’m telling you, the response from what I saw so far is incredible, and people appreciate it, and I thank you for your service, years of service. It’s quite remarkable. So thank you, Mrs. Ward. A few weeks back, I had an opportunity to meet with a few families. A mutual friend reached out to me regarding a special-needs family that was having some concerns and problems in the district, and he figured, give me a call and see if we could, see if we could help out a little bit. And I met with this family, and we sat down for about an hour, and I left that meeting quite speechless, to be quite honest with you. Let me just also say this, I do not blame any single person on this board whatsoever for the issues that I’m going to present here tonight. I don’t believe it’s any single one person’s issue. I believe it’s something that’s probably, has gone on for so long in this district. After that meeting, I realized when I made it public that I met with this family, many other families have reached out to me, and I started seeing the same type of problems as they would reach out to me, they would explain the same type of issues. It was common pretty much across the board for the most part. So what we decided to do was to just meet with them all at once, and we did that. I believe that was like on the twenty-sixth of August. And after that meeting, it was determined that there’s really, at that point in time, as I am not an expert in special needs, I do not pretend to be, that I thought it was appropriate to see if we could reach out to those that might have much more experience in this field than myself. And that’s when we reached out to Mrs. Conway and Ms. Maroni, and they met with us at our second meeting, and it was extremely informative. Almost the same amount of people came, there were some new faces, and a couple of things we went over, and I just want to present to the board some of the common issues that we have heard across the board. Number one, children being rushed through the system. Two, no proper placement. Three, not adequate curriculum, need vocational school, vocational skills, learning. Special needs PTA is needed. We should be looking to see what other schools are doing and how they, and how they do their programs, and what works for them and what doesn’t work for them. IEPs not being done or filed through on, out-of-district placement. Also, I just want to say, the teachers do such a phenomenal job, the support staff as well, it is, I believe, you know, we probably need more powers in the classroom, but it is not their fault. I believe that their hands are tied on this, but the children are not, they’re not ready for the level that they’re currently at, and there’s clearly a problem with that. The focus seems to be more on cost than it is on the children itself. And again, I do not sit in your seat, in your position, I do not know. This comes directly from families that have struggled within this district for many, many years. We weren’t biased, we invited everybody to come and join us. I believe Sam, Sam was at one of the meetings as well. It was eye-opening. My heart broke for many of the families, it really did. It was non-political, it had nothing to do with that. It had everything to do with to try to fix whatever the problem is, and I know that Mrs. Conway and Ms. Maroni, they helped tremendously, they did a great job, they spoke. I think Mrs. Conway actually had one of the, one of the parent’s students at one point. So there was, there was a lot of familiarity. And what I’d like to say is this, you know, I personally have my own opinions on certain, certain things, certain individuals. I won’t bring it up tonight, tonight’s not the form for that, and I hope that will eventually be addressed, but I just wanted to present, Mr. Shi, these issues to the board and to make you aware of them. I’m sure that some of you are aware of some of these problems. I think now is the time to pass it off to you guys and to the right people, to the committee, and I think these parents really need a support group as well, and that was the other thing, is creating a support group for them, because they feel like they are alone, and it’s a shame, because they are not alone. We have their back, we have their support, the whole town has their back, and I think they need to be told that every once in a while, because it’s what they’re dealing with, what they’re dealing with is quite unfair, in my opinion. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Tony Debusqual to Pine Street. Just to piggyback off what Anthony has brought up, I have two special-needs teenagers, been in the district for eleven years. It’s been an uphill battle, and I’m not speaking for all the parents, but I know in conversations with many parents, I’m not alone, haven’t been alone. A lot of the atmosphere, I’m not saying in just Edison, is an us and them. It’s the school district, or it’s the special needs, or it’s the child study team, which is supposed to be all the parents and the case manager stuff, but what it turns out to be is case manager, parents. And it’s constantly that struggle back and forth of, you know, unfortunately, it becomes to a fight. The parents have to fight for what they need, and the case manager has to fight for what they don’t want the school to provide for the children. And mainly, the reason for that, I have found, is in talking to people, is the cost factor. It’s always the cost factor. Why do you not want to place a child out of school? It’s going to cost a lot of money. I understand that. But if it’s better for the child, well, that’s something that should be done, because the end result is society pays for the sins that we have in not providing special-needs children what they need to be able to live in a society. I many times was asked in IEP meetings, “Where do you see your child in ten years?” Well, I don’t know, it depends. It depends on how much I’m going to fight for my child to get the education that they need to live in society. And that’s something that, you know, parents, special-needs parents have enough to struggle with. They have enough to look at what’s going to happen in the future with their children. Who’s going to support them when they’re gone? The foundation that they get in the school system is so important, and I know it’s for all kids, but I’m specifically talking special-needs kids, it is so important to have that base for special-needs children so they can function, because sometimes we have people, and again, you know, dealing with so many IEP meetings, you know, you have the questions where, you know, “Well, do you really see your child going to college?” And I had a supervisor say that to me. “We have programs in the school, because your child probably won’t even make it to go to college.” Well, can I tell you something? I have a nineteen-year-old who’s in his last year, stayed an extra year. When he was in seventh grade, we were told by a supervisor that he shouldn’t take a Spanish class, because he wouldn’t do well in that class. We fought to have him at Spanish class. He skipped over multiple Spanish classes. His teachers are so impressed with his Spanish, people that have, are out of the, out of the school, who speak Spanish, have said how well he speaks Spanish. He’s going to Middlesex County College next year for Spanish to be a translator, because we have been told by his teachers and many people that he has the skills to do that. If we listened to that supervisor back that many years ago, he wouldn’t have a skill that will probably, he’ll be able to support himself on, and his younger brother, who’s actually lower than him in this. I second, my nineteen-year-old again, sixth grade, we were told, we’re a very musical family, my wife’s a music teacher, we were told, you know what, he probably won’t be able to handle playing cello. I don’t think that’s a good idea. Phenomenal cello player. He plays in the high school orchestra, he’s been playing for a long time, he has perfect pitch. This is what parents deal with, and this is just, you know, myself, there’s many examples of what, you know, the parents have to deal with, and as Anthony said, it’s not the teachers. The teachers try their hardest to work with these kids. What it is, it’s coming from the top down about cost, about how many teachers. I don’t have a supervisor at Edison High School. There’s no, I contacted Mr. Conklin, there’s no supervisor there. Oh, we’re going to be hiring somebody. It’s what, three weeks in the school? We don’t have a supervisor, so somebody is covering for the supervisor for the school. She’s dealing with her schools and also has to cover a big school like Edison High School? That’s uncalled for. You should have somebody in place at this beginning of school. This is, again, what special-needs parents have to deal with. Outside of school, there’s so many things you have to go through, tests, evaluations, bringing your children constantly to the, to different classes. My son was going to JFK Hospital for speech therapy for years. It’s a busy schedule that special-needs parents have to deal with, and then they go to a school system that is supposed to educate their children, and what happens? They have to go through a fight. I did mediation with my younger son. We went to the state. We sat across from the school officials. I brought my case. You know what they did? They were silent. They said- They said absolutely nothing. So the mediator said they want to step out. No problem. Mediator stepped out with them. Mediator came back. His response was, they said they'll give you what they want, what you want, but they don't want to ever hear from you again.
Excuse me, sir. Your time is up.
Okay, I'm just finished. Give me two seconds. My response back was, I'll be in this school district for a long time. They will hear from me. So just to give you a little insight of what one special needs parent is dealing with, we have what, 1,700, I think, special needs kids in the school district? No, that's what I was told. I was told we have 1,700. Is it different, Mr. Sheed? Can you, can you, can't tell me? I saw your face. Obviously, that's not the truth. So can I know the truth?
Finish up. I'll answer your question.
Okay, great. So my point is, is that we need to just realize what our special needs parents are dealing with. And it's all so their children can live, live in a society with everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other public comments? Yes.
Just really quickly, I'm sorry, I'm kind of, my name's William Rios. My daughter goes to Woodrow Wilson. I live in 153 Prestwick, Edison. I'm just going to be talking really quickly because I listened to you guys actually, so I'm going to stop for a moment and kind of give a thought there. I listened to all of you guys kind of give a little bit of a speech about vaping. And I found it interesting that you guys were talking about something because you're going at a proactive approach towards the safety of our kids, which is great. So I'm going to talk really quickly. And it's interesting because we're all here because we care about our kids. And for me, I'm talking about just busing. My daughter goes to Woodrow Wilson. She was denied busing right now. And she's actually walking home, two and a half miles across Talmadge Road, very unsafe with no, no help. She has to cross a bridge, which there's very little security there. When we call the board and we call the Department of Transportation, we get told first come, first serve basis. I just utter the thought that every time someone gives you a problem, that you just recite a sentence, first time, first come, basis. My daughter's an excellent student. We've tried going through the avenues of reaching out to the Department of Transportation. It's very interesting that, you know, when you, and I've gone through your, what we have out there, the copy of our agenda, and you read through it, it's very eloquent. There's point by point. There's a lot of structure to it. And it's so funny because when, when my daughter gets denied, she gets one paragraph with a date, with no date on it, from an administrative secretary. So I challenge, I ask the, the question, what exactly is the structure? What's the procedure exactly that you guys have in place to fix the busing issue? Because to my understanding, there were dozens, if not hundreds, of parents at the, the Board of Education before school started dealing with this issue. Unfortunately, my wife and I worked, we weren't able to go there that day. But I am kind of curious if there's any thoughts in revamping this process. I can pay for my daughter's school lunch online. I can do everything the school wants me to do before I can get my daughter's schedule online. I can't even get my daughter's schedule without filling out all these forms. So everything the school needs, I get it to you. But somehow, my daughter can't get transportation to her school. And when I call, someone says, first come, first come basis. When we email, in fact, I'm sorry, I took the third call to get it back. Then finally, we escalated. We get told first come, first serve basis. How about I challenge that someone actually physically go on the bus and count? Because there's two empty seats. As my daughter's walking home, there are two empty seats on the same exact bus that my daughter, once informed to the Department of Transportation, they said, we look into it. And guess what? What were the quotes? But remember, it's first come, first served basis. So I challenge you guys because I think it was eight of you that read about a vaping issue and it's all about safety, right? What we're looking at after our kids. I ask, where's the safety for my kid? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments? Yes, Carol.
Carol Podowsky, 39, Jonathan Drive. I'm going to get very short. I just want to get through it. Every child who attends the Edison Public Schools is legally and morally entitled to a free and appropriate public education, no matter what their educational needs may be. Period. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes.
My name is Partial Patel, 6905 Hannah Road. Thank you, Mrs. Ward, for those strong words. And I think we should all remember why we are here, and that is to help and support every child and family in our district. I met a family this weekend that wanted me to speak up about their daughters at J.P. Stevens. They are concerned about their workload and homework, as well as some time management and curriculum issues. They're also concerned about structuring, structuring their extracurricular activities to make time to do their homework and all, you know, make sure they have dinner and proper amount of sleep. They are worried about anxiety and stress-related health issues, which I think is very important. And it's one of, it's a major mental health concern. I met another family with a special needs child. I mean, I don't want to repeat what was already said. However, many challenges that these families are facing on a day-to-day basis must be addressed. I think that, I think there are many issues and they need to be our top priorities right now. Bhavana Rebel's story really moved me right now, and I will follow up with their concerns as well. Vaping is another issue, which has led to vaping-related pulmonary injury. This is a long-term health concern, which we need to address now for our future. If we don't address the issues now, it will spiral into an epidemic, if it isn't already one, and all the vaping-related deaths. I want to thank everyone for your time and all your hard work you've been doing. And I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, you want to comment? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm going to comment a speaker or two back. You didn't catch me on that one. But, and this is only because I'm on the busing committee. And
What, what, do we, what, what is it? Okay. Yeah, yeah. So any public comments? Yes. Sure.
Let them finish. They might have the same question. So we'll answer at the end, then.
Okay.
My name is Joseph Romano. I live at 55 Avenue C, Edison, New Jersey. I would like to thank the board for what you did in a time of my problems. I served for six years on this board, and I sat here tonight and I heard a lot of the same things. Busing. Well, if there's two empty seats on a bus, the fact of the matter is, is first come, first served, and those two seats might be taken by somebody that's not there today. Maybe on vacation, maybe sick, what have you. I don't think what you're listening to is people that are upset. I think you're listening to people that haven't been given the education of the busing system as a whole. Number two, the special needs children. Throw the chair to Mr. Michel. Dan, you and I used to talk about this constantly. We had meetings with parents. And I don't believe, and as a former board member, I, I really don't believe that there's any board member, any member of the Edison Township school system that is willing to not give special needs children what they need. And, and sometimes, at one time, I believe you were with me, Dan, when there was a couple people at one of our middle schools. We were giving a budget presentation, and two people came up to me and said, Mr. Romano, I realize that there's a budget problem, and, and please don't take my special needs for my children. Well, there was nothing, that we weren't going to do that. But what happens is, is that parents want to know one thing. What can the school system do for them? And there was a parent that got up, and I do not know this person. But here's what you got to remember. When that child leaves our school system, 18, 19, if they have an IEP, sometimes it goes to 26, I believe. If that child isn't productive, that child gets left behind. Not left behind in school, but left behind in society. And our school district, as well as the state and federal government, aren't doing their fair share. Mr. Michel, you know that those funds are cut. They've been cut. And I don't believe the public knows that as much. So I'm going to stand up and say that I truly believe that the parents of special needs children should be listened to. But I truly believe that the children get left behind, and we have to figure out a way, we, and I use all of you and all of us, to figure out a way to vote for the right people who are going to support our special needs children. Our special needs children are the future of our society. We have to take and support them. Once again, thank you for your time. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Sam?
Samuel Marshall, Leaven Hilltop Road. I firstly want to thank the board for answering a question I posed at a previous meeting regarding whether vaping had been included in the health class curriculum. I heard it was, and that made me very relieved to hear that our students are being educated as to the many harms that this new trend poses. And in relation to what I had heard later in the night, I, my heart truly goes out to all of the parents of children with special needs and all they've been going through in terms of administrative difficulties, in terms of trouble procuring the proper services for their children. And in relation to that, I was just wondering how in communication our Board of Education in Edison is with, say, other boards of education from other towns who might be running similar services for special education children, who might be doing a better job, might be doing something differently. How in coordination, or how closely do you communicate with other boards of education regarding what they do right and wrong? So we can make our own school district better.
Any other questions?
No, that is all.
Okay. So special ed with other towns, you want to address that? Can you say something, Mr. Sheed? Yes, go ahead. We share services, yeah.
Being an educator, an administrator, I don't think boards of ed communicate with each other as much as supervisors, assistant superintendents, superintendents. I know superintendents meet monthly. Principals meet monthly as a county. There are meetings that discuss that. We do have, I don't know how strong it is here, it's very strong where I'm at, it's called CPAC, Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, where they meet on a monthly basis and have topics or speakers come in. I'm not sure what we do here. Mrs. Maroni is, I think, our special ed liaison. She could probably speak more to it. But again, boards of ed, kind of, because, you know, fortunately, we have some educators on the board of ed here. A lot of boards of ed don't have anyone in education and are not kind of up to date on special education, either law or, you know, procedures and things to do. But I guarantee you, our superintendent, our assistant superintendents, our principals, they meet with other districts. And we call it stealing ideas. You know, if we can't come up with something that we could use, we'll steal an idea from another district. We're not proud. You know, if it helps the kids, let's help the kids.
Sam, there is an entity called the Educational Services Commission. And every school district in the area and then outside of Middlesex County sends either a superintendent or a board of ed member once a month to their meetings. They have many schools all over the area. There's a big campus in Piscataway and another big campus in Saraville. And they deal with very, very high, highly disabled children, needy children. Thanks. And every month, they present a program of one of the events or, or one of the special programs that's brand new in special education. So we get that on a monthly basis. And then, as Mr. Eriko said, we bring it back to the district, we discuss it. There was a, a new type of whiteboard that the kids were using in special ed that we saw over at the Ed Center, Educational Services Commission. And when I came back, I asked Mr. Conklin, do we have anything like this? And he said, oh, yeah, we have several of those in the district. So that's how we do the communication with other townships.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other public comments? See none? Oh, sorry. Yes, Mr. Brusher. Oh, Mrs. Conklin, okay.
Mrs. Conway.
All right, okay. Yes, Mr. Brusher.
Okay, yeah. I just, being on the bus committee, which I guess I should say is an honor, you know, as far as being an honor as being a board member, the, the next top slot there would be being on the bus committee. The bus committee that we have, we, what we try and do is we're trying to make the routes easier for, for our residents and for our students. Some of them are outdated, and we try to update those for the most part. We are obligated by law to pick up students within a certain mileage. And after that, it's called subscription busing. There was a big push that we had because what we heard from the parents was, if you want to pay, we should give you a bus. And the way that I look at it is, if the parents paid for the ones that only live a mile from school, it helps with the traffic congestion that we have throughout the townships. So it was like a win-win. We tried raising the rates. There was a big push, saying it was too much for this year and that we needed to do it slowly, you know, a little bit more, a little bit next year, a little bit next year, to bring us up to a rate that covers the cost. Because it would be unfair to the taxpayers of Edison for them to have to pay for something that the law doesn't say is required. It would be like giving free lunch to everybody. You know, certain students get free lunch, certain get reduced lunch. But the law dictates what it is. To give free lunch to everybody would be unfair to the other residents. So that was the idea with raising the bus fees so that we could offer those services to everyone. Now, in your case in particular, I believe this is over down by Talmadge. And I went by there the other day, and I looked at the route. I mean, walking, you know what I mean? And I, to make it a safe route, I would say, on the Woodbrook side, if the sidewalk were to continue, instead it hits woods and then disappears, you know, so the child has to walk across the street and then come down and then walk back across the street. Part of that meeting with the township that I have now is, I probably had 10 items listed to talk about how we could work together on different things. And adding that sidewalk, I, I add it to that list. So when I hear back from Bob Deal and Ralph, hopefully next week, that we have this meeting settled, it's one of the things we're going to kind of request because I think it's a couple hundred feet of a sidewalk. And it would keep the students on the same side of the street. They don't really have, and if they're going to Woodbrook, there's no streets they're really going to have to cross. I mean, if they go to Woodrow Wilson, they're going to have to cross a couple side streets there. But it would only be because next year, as we said, first come, first served. Next year, you're first on to sign up, you're going to get the bus. There'll be another parent that will be sitting in that seat. There'll be another parent that will be sitting in that seat.
Excuse, excuse, let, 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 no, 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 I'm sorry. No, no, it's not a back and forth. It's not about that, it's about your process.
Oh, you can talk from the speaker.
It's, it's just about the process. I made a point of, you guys, the Board of Education has a lot of things set up that work very well when they need something, but it seems like it's a check that goes to a specific person that's physically handling it.
Oh, okay.
To, to actually start with your, your bus, to actually get on the list, your process is broken. I could probably shop for my groceries and, and my kids' next year's school supplies while during this meeting, but you guys can't get us to the point where we're doing this a little bit more automatically, where I didn't have to wait and wait and wait and check my mailbox, then I get a letter, it's not even dated, from, from, I don't want to use her name, but an administrative secretary that said, sorry, you're on the waiting list. Didn't say I'm one on the waiting list, didn't say I'm two on the waiting, I get it, I get it, it's a lot. Trust me, I'm in a complex where they're all kids, I understand that. But the, the process is broken, really, the only reason why I'm here is because, truthfully, again, to my point before, when you guys want something, when they need something from the parents, they found a way. I couldn't get my kid's schedule without filling out all those forms, the liability and this and that, whatever.
I, let me, let me tell you what we did. We, we did recognize that there was the issue that you're talking about. We did that, I'm gonna say, about a year and a half ago. We bought a system, a busing system now, it's called Versatrans. Versatrans is now going to be tied into our enrollment and our genesis, I believe, right? So we're all tied in together. All the systems. They're revamping how the calls came in, because typically what would happen during these first couple weeks, which was horrendous, because you have one bus that didn't show up, you get maybe seventy phone calls, because you get not just one parent, you get, you know, one and a half parents are calling.
Excuse me, excuse me, you can't, you can't...
Right, so we, we end up getting all those parents that call.
And I think that's great, if you're developing a process, maybe exactly...
Please, no back and forth, let them say...
Yeah. So what happened was, it overwhelms the, the couple people that we have working there to the point where they can't even get back to everybody, which is in itself an issue. So the administration acknowledged that, and they went to go revamp, you know, how that reporting comes in and where it's gonna go. I can't give you the details of it, but I can tell you that they did. In fact, I was hoping Dan was gonna jump in on that one, because we talked about it, I think it was a week or two ago. Just to let you know that that process, what you're talking about, has been acknowledged. We do have a solution for it, and it should be up and running, I think, by November, December? Will be complete?
We just had a meeting today, and Mr. Benedict has been trying to automate that setup for the, for subscription busing, so people can pay for it online and do everything online. That should be set up very shortly.
That's great. And just one more point, although the gentleman, I think everyone's needs need to be attended to, the bus is empty with two kids, and it's not because people are out, it's been very regular. So I like to reach out to someone and see if I can remedy getting my daughter on a bus because there are two spots available. Even the teachers have confirmed that. So it's great that you guys have a process in place, because that's why we're here. We all live here, it's a great town. I know it's a hard job that you guys have, but we're all trying to do what's best for our kids, and that's why I'm here.
Yeah, can you leave your information, you know, at the end of the meeting, so, you know? Oh, you got, we got an email, that's right, yeah, okay, yeah, we have, okay. Yeah, all right, thanks. Anybody else? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Shi. I would just like to respond to special needs parents. Beth and I had the chance to sit down and talk to the special, special people, and that's what I'd like to call the parents, their special people. But as a board member, our hands are truly tied as far as fixing things. The only thing that we can do is take the information from you and bring it to our administration, which we actually did. The thing I'm going to ask the parents for, in order to open up this discussion to more and more parents, and I know there has to be more, is to start coming to those special ed advisory council meetings. We don't have ten meetings. I believe I was told, Beth, there's four meetings. Two are during the day, two make it convenient for people that can only come during the day, and then there's two at night. And it seems to me, if we do get a good enough turnout of parents coming to these meetings and voicing their concerns, which is why this committee was established many years ago, and when I was actually a teacher in the district, I used to attend those meetings. They can be very educational, learning about the programs that are going on in the district, but at the same time, if you have a question or a concern, it's your chance to bring it to light to one of the supervisors and let them know. You need to constantly, and that's the only thing I, I speak to parents, I tell them, you are the number one advocate for your child, and you are to never give up, because without you, things won't be done. So I truly thank everyone for coming out that night, that Beth and I had met with you. It just seems that our hands are tied as far as doing it, but we can relay it to the people that can. And I just ask that, don't give up. These kids are ours. They're our future, and they are special, and just as special as the parents that are caring for them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, no more comments?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second. Okay, Dr. Channel, in favor? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.